I'd like to acknowledge all the visitors, but Mayor Roddy is here this evening as well with us. Because one of the subjects we'll be talking about later on potentially will involve the village as well. Are there any amendments to the agenda? If not, I'd like to open for privilege of the floor on any of the agenda items only. Under reports, Phil, let's start with you.
Well, mine is going to be a little lengthy if you want to start with everyone else.
I will start with Lou then.
I gave my report to him that night. Now, very shortly, not too much to be brought on other than the fact that we did get a nice letter of thanks to the Highway Department for cleaning up all the brush in Hamiltonian Park and I just want that to be on record. Secondly, as far as, in the Highway Department, I was talking to the Highway Superintendent, they still didn't get all the brush, they're trying to, but you have to remember we have like 78 miles of roads out there, so this is a big, big undertaking. The other thing, as far as the senior center, the rentals are going great as far as the holidays and so forth. And the only thing I want to remind everybody as far as seniors are concerned, Jerry, I don't know if you could put this in the paper only because today we were predicting snow, the senior center goes on the schedule, if the school is closed, the senior center is closed, so I just want that to be on record, so the seniors will see that and not make a trip out there. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Ken?
You may have one more without briefly. Water and Sewer is not in place, have any catastrophes, any water main breaks, so that's a good thing. And just very briefly, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, because this is our only meeting in the month of December, so the best to your families.
Hey, Phil, I have one more there. Sure.
Since Mr. Roddy, the mayor is here tonight, on Monday night, I went over those things about Orange and Rockland and what they did at the police station, the Highway Department, and also Water and Sewer, as far as the fluorescent lights being changed where they're not going to manufacture the T-12 bulbs anymore, and they're going to be replacing all of ours and so forth, they're going to pick up 70% of the cost and our end of it's going to be like $1,200, as I went over the report the other night. The reason I'm bringing this up, Kyle, I wanted to let you know, because I want to get with Mr. Pete Smith, the other night we said why not have them visit the senior center, since they're picking up 70%. So me and Broderick Knoll from the Highway Department got ahold of Orange and Rockland, they are sending somebody out on Wednesday to do the survey, so if we can get the same deal, I'm bringing this up because that's a 50-50 issue, it would probably behoove us to go forward because there would be a lot of money saved because there are a lot of lights in there that have the old ballisters and so forth. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, okay?
Thanks for that.
Thank you, Lou. George?
The joint rec report is as follows. I have a copy of this for anybody who really wants to do it, I'll just summarize it. The winter recreation programs are continuing on, zumba classes. Also, we have drama kids that are starting after the first of the year, adult co-ed rec volleyball. And anyone who wants to get further information can go to the website, which is www.goschenrecreation.org. The events that took place recently, last one was the 5K Turkey Trot and the Chicken Chuckers was on 11/19, Saturday. It was a great event, everybody had a good time, and special thank yous to the people who helped us run this, which is Price Choppers in Middletown, Shop Right, Crystal Run Healthcare, Interstate Waste, Hudson Valley Awards, James Murray Florist, and Hudson Valley Boot Camp. The Radio City Christmas Spectacular, which is an annual event, bus trip to the city, was held on December 1st. 112 people went to New York City and had a great time, and everyone returned safe and happy. The parks, due to the snowstorm that took place at the end of October, our parks experienced a tremendous amount of downed trees. An extremely large tree fell down on a fence and onto a basketball court at Yuri Street. The park staff had to do some major cleanup on that area. At Lyons Park, the electrical line snapped and caused substantial damage to the electric box, which is in the process of being fixed. The park season is coming to a close, the restrooms at Solition Park are closed and winterized, and the water supply to the restroom and kitchen at Craigville will be shut down tomorrow, 12/9. That facility will be winterized and closed until spring. Now, for an interesting thing that I think is interesting. The last time, we had a village-town meeting. And you guys remember that? Probably what, two and a half years ago?
I was younger that time.
One of the things that we discussed that night was to have an RFP developed for the demolition of the Solition building. And it kind of ran into a whole bunch of snags because we thought we were going to have the village attorney write it, but it really kind of morphed in a lot more into engineering. Anyway, we had a limited amount of money. I spoke to Dennis Lindsay, our engineer, and he said, "Well, I'll see what I can do for you because I know you're strapped for money and blah, blah, blah," and so on and so forth. So anyway, the bottom line is, we now have a RFP for the demolition of the Solition. However, that's good, and we can put this on the shelf. I would believe, I don't want to speak for the village, but I'll speak for the town, we have no money to demo that building at this particular time, as much as we would like to. So the RFP is here, and when we get together and have the money, we will move forth.
Very good.
Can you get a copy eventually?
Sure. Yeah. As a matter of fact, I'll pass the whole thing over to you, Val, now. And you can make copies soon, and I would imagine maybe, Kyle, you'd want to have one for your purposes as well.
Thank you very much.
Right. And that's the end of my report.
Before you go to Phil, George, they said the Turkey Trot, they said that choked the chicken thing, or? That's been banned by them all. This is a hip hop message that it might be.
Did they, I don't know, were you there, Kyle?
I was the chicken.
Oh, you?
No, I was the chicken.
All glamorous than you were thinking. So did you get choked?
No, but there was no air holes in the rubber mask, or the eye holes, so it was a challenging morning.
Oh, and that's why your face is so red?
I guess it must be. I remember, Mr. Hickok, I always remember your objections to that.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman.
Neil, I'm sorry to see it. Phil?
I've called a lot, thanks Doug.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, first off, our chief is still out here. We're not sure what the extent of it is, so I met with Sergeant Faust the other day to maybe strategize how we were going to work this going forward, just in general. But mainly, what I want to talk about is, we all know that perception is reality. And I opened the Goshen paper, and I've been hearing things about a crime spree in the town of Goshen, and so on and so forth, and of course, the headlines, as most of you have probably seen, Crime Spikes in Goshen, Goshen Crime Spree Hits 58 Homes. Well, on something like that, the perception is, wow, people have broken into 58 homes and God knows how they have terrorized everyone. What it really boils down to is, there were 19 burglars and 39 larcenies. Well, that adds up to 58. Now, a burglar is when you break into a home, but if you stand there and don't steal anything, there's no larceny. Larceny is when you steal something, off the front lawn, out of a car in the driveway, out of some of these homes that were broken into. So it has this type of, these types of rumors or misinformation has a devastating effect on a small town. I mean, it affects the business people, the realtors, just think of anyone that goes on the website, and they read this headline, "Goshen Crime Spree Hits 58 Homes." My God, who wants to move there? I mean, it gives you the perception that there are a bunch of murderers and cocaine dealers and armed robberies. Well, that's just not the case, and I'll quote our investigator. "I think it's a bunch of young adults just being stupid." Well, that's a long way from a crime spree and the devastation that that type of rumor or discussion can cause. So I am a little upset, I am the police commissioner, but I see what it's doing to our community. I see people approaching me who really don't understand or have interpreted how it was written as the worst thing that could possibly happen. Now, for the most part, these were local young adults that had seen people go on vacation and broke into their homes. And now we have two in custody, or we have arrested two. So that's the extent of our crime spree. So I will just ask the press, and I've discussed this with our police department too, if you're going to report accurately, just report the data. So I just wanted to just clear that issue, and I'm not sure if I said it enough or clear enough or everyone feels the same, but please comment if you like.
I'd like to. Now, the crime statistics, when I myself saw 58 homes, I was like, my goodness, what is going on that I don't know about? And because the police department, Sergeant Faust, who was filling in for Chief Marge, did not talk to me about this. But, that being said, when we got with Sergeant Faust today, and we got the real particulars of it, there's quite a difference between 19 homes and 58 homes. But the word is already out on the street, it will be on the webpage, it'll be there for a long, long time to be, and it does impact business, or anybody else is trying to research out where do you want to live, and so on and so on. So it was, to me, irresponsible. Another thing that was put in the paper that is, I consider irresponsible, is if people have been here for our budget review back in early November, the state of New York passed a law encouraging us to have a 2% tax levy cap. This legislature passed it and the governor signed it. And why is that? Because I've spoken before, New Yorkers pay 78% above the national average on property tax. So we pay 178% of the national average on property tax. That's how expensive government is in the state of New York. And that's towns, buildings, fire departments, schools, libraries, any taxable authority.
State?
State. So, anybody who collects property. So anyway, we set out in motion to do our best to come in under the 2% tax cap, and we did. We had to take, I think it was $687,000, $682,000 of cost dollars out of the budget. That's a lot of savings, $687,000. And I went through the entire myriad of things that we were doing as a town board, trying to balance this picture. For example, the last, we purchased three vehicles this year. A new fleas car, brand new, a 1995 International Dump Truck, and a 1994 International Dump Truck, which Mr. Broderick Knoll was restoring to put into service, I think they're auctioning to put into service. We saved a quarter of a million dollars just in those two trucks. A new truck is $185,000 new. When people retired, we didn't pluck back to them. We had some part-timers we're laying off. We're doing a lot of things. But the one thing we did not do, we consciously did not do, is lay off any policemen. We did not lay off any policemen. And yet, in the paper today, it said, "We're bare bones, and we are this, and we are that." We have the same number of policemen today that were here when I got here on January 1st of 2006. We have two patrols 24 hours a day, two patrols 24 hours a day, and we have two sergeants in support of them. Now, what we are doing, we took $170,000 out of the police department, we're going to a part-time chief of police, and we're going to a part-time secretary or clerical person. We used to have a part-time clerical person there, and somewhere along the way, they were made full-time. Now they're part-time again. So, the police that people see on the street, on the beat, is the same as it's always been. But if you read the paper, it doesn't come out that way. Sounds like we're out of control on crime and we're underfunding it. Not so. That being the case, I'd like to report on some good stuff, though. You know, and by the way, I'd like to thank all of you for coming. This is your town, I'm glad you have interest in it, and it really makes me feel good because most of the time, even when we had our budget review, we have about three people here. And so we only get the people to come when there's a real hot issue that's germane to them. But this board, for many years now, we've had a five-year financial plan and a five-year strategic plan. And each year, we put in what we want to do during the course of the year. Because if you don't have a plan, you have to accept what Mother Nature gives you when you get there or don't get there. And so some of the things that we planned this year. We planned to work on our tax surcharge hearings. That's where people challenged how much tax they pay, businesses. And we have resolved about 90% of those this year. That was a good thing, because that was a hidden liability in prior years. We went to trial with the Altery Landfill Surcherry, and it's an appeal. It's a good thing. We think we have a strong case, and we'll see how we prevail. We had a sewer dispute now for three years with the village. And I think tonight, we're hoping to come to grips with that after three years of talking and negotiating and arbitrating and whatever, and I think we're going to come to an agreement, which is a good thing, a good thing, and that's why Kyle's here tonight. To hear what we've got to say. A 2012 budget prep. You know, I've been doing budgeting all my life in private enterprise, as many up on this board, and 2012 is the fourth year in the most serious recession in my lifetime, since the Great Depression. The fourth year. And we've been working on this thing every year, trying to control costs and whatever. But this year, with a 2% tax cap, it was much more difficult because we had some abnormal costs and lack of revenues, et cetera. And I think we've done a pretty good job, and we're, no one's satisfied. Our board's not satisfied. I'm certain the citizens aren't going to be satisfied with some of the things they see. The employees aren't satisfied, particular ones have to leave our employment. But it's a balancing act, and I think that, and it takes moral courage because somebody's always hosed off at you, you know, just that's what it takes, moral courage. And I think our boards had the moral courage. We weathered the storm, five storms, or earthquake, tornado, I couldn't believe that tornado when it went out on Ridge Road, that area, major devastation. Irene, Lee, and then the freak snowstorm. Five occurrences, and Mr. Knoll, who I, thank goodness he's here, he used to be five foot, he used to be seven foot four, now he's five foot one. They wore him down to the nub with all he's had to do, working from a backlog, trying to get everything done. And it's coming. Very shortly, very shortly, all of the debris will be picked up and hauled away. Property revaluation, we set this on our site a couple of years ago, and we have the assessing office in this facility. It could be anywhere, it could be in the school, it could be in the village, it could be in the county. It could be anywhere, we share the assessment. But the fact is, we have it here, it was many years that we sent our last revaluation. We're doing it, we're doing it with modern technology, it'll be computerized. We're doing it internally versus spending hundreds of thousands of dollars for outside people to do it. And it's got many, many advantages, and it's being sponsored, a good deal by the county and also by the state Real Property Tax Office. So the real cost to us is not all that great, if at all. Maybe a cash flow problem until they pay us, but I think it's going to work. So there's a few things that we completed or well underway that we said in the beginning of the year we would try to do, okay? And again, I can't thank this board enough, and all the employees, the town, and everybody else that we work with, our professionals, et cetera, and the village for the arbitration, all these things, that we can make a stronger community as a consequence of what we've been doing. And lastly, like Kenny, this is our last meeting for the year. I wish you all a very happy holiday and a prosperous new year. With that, we come to old business, and we have two public hearings that we would like to continue and maybe complete tonight. Would someone on the board like to make a motion that we reopen for continuation the NU3 LLC request for a zoning map change from RU to Highway Commercial of a 9.74 acre parcel, tax map 12-1-47? Someone?
Second. George, in second.
Steve, would you like to go through that again for anybody?
Is there anybody here for that?
Is there anybody, okay. Is there anybody who's, who?
Stay back there.
Who has not, Ms. Allen, we got your comments.
No, no, this is Rob.
Oh, this is one on, of course, this is 17M.
Yeah, this is.
The site is 9.7.
This is Gate School Road.
The site is located on the west lead side of the intersection of Gate School House Road and Route 17M.
Steve, we've seen this, show it to the public in case they have more questions. Thank you.
I just can't see it.
No. You've seen it. The site is located, just to get everybody organized, this is Gate School House Road, Hartley Road, and then the yellow line is 17A, or 17M. We're located on the western side of the intersection of Gate School House Road and 17M. The site consists of 9.7 acres. Of that, four acres is RU, which is rural residential, that's this piece of the site right here. The red part of the site is Highway Commercial, that's about 5.7 acres. The owners have been actively marketing this site for a number of years, particularly after the adoption of the new zoning law in 2009. And the petition before the board is to convert or to change the existing four acres of rural residential to Highway Commercial. And the request is being done, there is some interest in the parcel right now, and the HC zone you can develop, to where you can develop 70% of the site, which includes parking, sidewalks, building footprint, any impervious surface. So for the existing 5.7 acres, that would permit about a development of approximately four acres. If you were to include the four acres of residential into the Highway Commercial, physically, you really couldn't develop it, but the real developable area is right along 17. You would increase the area, or the gross area that could be used or calculated in the development coverage. And what that allows you to do, one, is having an ability to develop more than the four acre site, gives you a little bit better site to address some of the market demand out there. Gives you a little more flexibility in terms of how you can go about developing the site. And ultimately, will provide a better rateable for the town in terms of taxes. And that's it. So this is the existing, and hopefully, what happens, the green part will turn red, and this site would be Highway Commercial. And then the lighter colors, that's HO, which is, HCM, sorry, which is, I'll take that back, CO, which is Commercial Office.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this? Yes, you'll need to come and talk into the microphone and state your name and where you live.
I'm the owner of 52 Gate School House Road. I live, I'm not in the Goshen, I own that property, it's up at the Ears Act. I bought up behind Menor's 48th parcel. The new zoning law that went into effect in 2009, what exactly was that?
The town amended their comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. They changed the, modified some of the zoning designations along the 17M corridor, and then also some different changes throughout the town.
In that 70%, have you guys done any wetland delineation out there? Because several years ago, you bulldozed through a bunch of wetlands out there, and I'm sure they're going to come back up when they do a delineation. So you're going to subtract that, you 70% too, right? I did a feasibility study on this several years ago, and went to Kipsey and talked to the New York DOT. And they're going to make you put a change, a right-hand lane, nothing's in writing or anything, but basically, they said, you know, put a right-hand lane in there, we're going to have turn singles have to be changed there, and so on and so on, and it made the property get smaller and smaller and smaller, including the state setbacks. Have you guys requested any kind of site plans from this gentleman? What do you want to actually put there? What kind of impact it's going to have? And has there been a traffic study on Gate School House? And with that, coming off of 17 there, that Gate School House goes up over that hump and banks to the right. If you have your mind set that you're going to give these gentlemen what they want, how about we get that road cut straight and take some of his four acres? The big thing is the New York DOT, if you got a lot of hurdles with them, myself being in land development, I know that I would take that land, rezone the four acres, and have my entrance, and I did come on through Gate School House. Are you going to allow that? But then he doesn't have to deal with the New York State, and he's going to save a lot of money.
To answer your question, the request is not for what they're going to put on it, but for a zoning change on the parcel. So we don't know what will be, how it'll be used and whatnot.
You can't take that in consideration as a contingency of?
Well, when an application is made, there'll be a secret review, et cetera, et cetera, and so, and all those other things you're talking about. I think tonight, what we're going to be dealing with is, if we make the decision tonight, whether we're going to rezone this or respond to the request one way or the other.
I had just gotten a letter from your councilor. I'm wondering why you left it open to the second meeting. Was there any?
Well, you're here tonight, that's one reason, to give everybody an opportunity. We were not prepared, we were waiting to hear from the planning board and Dennis, I guess, would be.
This one also was Kelly doing.
Corrected.
Yes, that's right.
But what was the result of that? I don't have a response. I haven't seen anything. I'm Lee McCurry. Yeah, myself on it.
Was anybody concerned about the wetlands that were bulldozed a few years back?
Didn't know of it.
Well, we aren't, I'm not.
Everybody's driven by it. And the grass got bigger, and then it got done again, and the grass got bigger, and the water went more towards.
That comes up when you give a site plan, what you're going to do in the future.
That comes up when you give a site plan, what you're going to do, and the planning board goes over the wetlands and so forth. We, sitting up here, don't get into that right now, at this stage.
Well, the gentleman said, we like our commercial taxes, it's more ratables for you guys, but lowering the value of the residential as you head down Gate School House, you're going to lower your taxes there. I'm not for it, as you can see. And I know the reason why they're doing it, it's the New York DOT, but we don't need any more traffic on Gate School House coming out there, especially around that turn. And if there's no traffic studies, I can't see how a decision could be made, because you know the entrance and exit is going to end up by law, that you have to grant him an entrance and exit on Gate School House, if you give him that commercial zone by law, I believe. Correct that?
It certainly would be, you know, a proper, a good question to make.
We don't. It's residential area, it starts with there. Peter Menor was trying to show up, but he's caught in Long Island, he called me. He's another concerned neighbor.
Good.
I think that covers it.
Thank you. Your comments?
Yeah.
Sir?
Yeah.
You need to state your name and where you live as well.
My name's Peter Lai. I love Goshen. I've lived in Goshen for 23 years. But I have bad news to report to you. During my 23 years living in Chichamau, 127, I knew there are five people are cancer victims. One of the victims is not myself. The reason I say that...
This is a public character. A separate public character.
No, 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 it's not. It's about this. It's about this case.
Right, okay.
I'm not going to distract, I don't waste your time, okay? My only one concern is, is a ruler, now we changed to commercial. If we change to commercial, what kind of operation they are going to do? That is my concern. If they are doing, presumably, say, I'm okay, I'm organic farmer. I know what's a compost, I know what's a...
That's the other one.
If this is the case, if this is the case, or I'm going to wrong case?
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, he is...
No, he's...
You're going to ask me, he's commercial and dead, why they...
No, he isn't. He's here for, he mentioned a word that says that he's here for the other...
If this is the case...
There's two public hearings, public...
I'm sorry. No, I thought this is the case about the... I thought you were interested. All right, I'm back to answer some more information. Okay, right there. Okay, you in a minute.
Can I just make one more comment, please? If you're considering Highway Commercial, Highway Commercial, from the research I know from other towns, it allows apartments on the second floor, correct? I don't know if that's in your zoning.
I'd have to look at our code.
Most Highway Commercial...
Well, we have our own code. Jermaine's our town, I don't know.
A lot of these towns, Warwick, Florida, everybody copied each other, and Warwick started it. And Highway Commercial allows apartments. Maybe if you guys have your minds made up...
We don't have our minds made up.
Hey, that's great public here, you know why? Because I pulled a couple of neighbors into life, they probably got their minds made up, and you're going to bitch and complain anyway.
Okay.
It's just Highway Commercial allows apartments, so there goes your ratables, because you're going to be sending kids to your schools. If general commercial doesn't allow, maybe you can consider that. General commercial definitely doesn't allow apartments.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other comments? Would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Well, we love to ask questions, too. Certainly. I have a question for Steve. The question I have is back, you said this was changed in 2009, I thought it was changed in, I just want to make sure, was it 2004?
Correct.
All right. But was this rechanged in 2009?
Both times it was changed.
All right. Now, my question to you is that, that is one large parcel of land that goes under one lot number or something?
Well, this is 9.7 acres, under one tax parcel.
And, okay. Because I did some research on it, and it seems to me when you have residential and commercial, at least when I came from Jersey, they had two different lot numbers. This has one lot number for the whole...
Yeah, this is two tax lots.
But we have several in the town.
I'm just... This is a...
That's two tax lots.
Five point seven, five acres and four acres of it.
One tax lot, 9.7 acres. It is bisected by a zone line, which kind of lines up with the tax...
Right.
You know, sort of a line on it. And that's what we did when we planned it. Right. And then you have a larger piece of CO in the back.
Now, when, back in 2004, was that all commercial, or was it the way it is now?
I believe it was all commercial.
And then they split it in half?
Then it got split.
Then in 2009, did it stay the same, or did it go back to something else? Just to get some history.
It's back to this.
Okay. So at one time, it was all commercial. That's my question, the question, just to get some history on it.
I believe that is wrong. When was tax, when was it rezoned?
2004, 2008.
I'm looking at tax maps at my home from 2006.
Use the mic, please.
Yeah.
It was never commercial. I researched that whole area before I purchased, but I purchased in 99. And then, again, I was looking at it in maybe '05, and it was not, it was definitely never...
All right, so in the eight, we made it part of the commercial, if that's true.
No, the front was always commercial.
Yeah, that's what I just asked.
Front was always commercial. No, he was saying previously, the back was commercial, if I understood that right, before he made the change.
Tell him.
Yeah, that's right.
Tell him to be on...
I've been involved in the group about five years.
That piece of property's been on the market probably about over 10.
Okay.
Because it has time on.
I'll give you a motion on the floor in a second to close the public hearing. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, what I'd like to do is to take a straw vote. Well, first of all, I'll start with Phil, and we'll go down through and discuss this. And then I want to take a straw vote as to whether, where we think we are in this, because the motion that we make will depend on what, I think, where we're going.
If I may, rather than a straw vote, what I would suggest is at least, if you address the issue, express your, you know, position, if you will, and the affirmative or denial, if you will, of the application, as opposed to a straw.
Right, that's what I...
That is why the, you know...
No, no, I understand. Thank you for clarifying. Phil?
So I can see Dennis.
Sure.
Now, in looking at this, back in 2008, when we did the, we updated our master plan, some of the reasoning was that we needed to update where commercials should be, where Highway, the way things move, the traffic studies and patterns. We spent an awful lot of month, in excess of $100,000, on engineering, planning, and legal work to update all of the zoning, so it would be proper, or what we thought it would be proper. So at this point, we've already spent all that money, and it took us, I think, two years of looking at this and removing everything to make sure that we got the highest and best use of the property. So the way I see it, is the way I felt at that point, I had no reason to change as to what we upgraded and paid our professionals to advise us on, unless there was some unknown reason. That type of zoning, I think, is the right zoning, and I still think so. So that's where I am on this particular piece. I don't want to do any spot zoning, because people can come in with every single piece of property, it's encroaching on the residential area, it goes up a residential road, it's not on the highway, the parcel that we're talking about. And I really don't want to encroach on any of our residential people that have built it.
Well, can I just...
Yeah, you can.
One of the things that, you know, that the HC is subject to, and it's in your petition, is basically, there's a hundred, if you double your rear yard or front yard or side yard setback in a commercial zone or residential zone. So what you're doing, and I don't know if you remember this in the petition, but you're actually reducing the developable ability to the commercial zone because you have, on the same lot. Because there's this line, the zoning line, that separates the four acres of the tax parcel from the 5.7 acres from the tax parcel. So you actually have to have 100 foot setback from the adjoining piece, plus you have to have a 100 foot setback from your home line. Those have to be wooded, and they have to be landscaped. So you significantly reduce, maybe 5.7 acres, but you significantly reduce the developability of this lot. And that's why we're here tonight, because we feel in good planning, you could have, still, you still maintain that 100 foot setback. From the... This is what you would have now. So this is residential. So you have a 100 foot setback with residential. This actually pitches off to the center of, because it's only a half, and then you have a 100 foot setback there. Still, and you still, you pick up, you know, that, you know, that many, half an acre and acre of land that you felt in the commercial zone portion.
Okay, George?
Okay, I think I'll start out with, I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't remember your gentleman's name who spoke before, but I just think generically, the public, I speak for myself, and I also speak for this board, because I'm constantly speaking for them about all these different issues. The perception is, is that somehow or other, from your mouth, that we have our mind made up, you know, the deal has been made in the back room, or whatever. And, well, I got, that's kind of what was kind of inferred, and I just want to make sure that everyone in this room realizes that the amount of time and effort that goes into these discussions, we've discussed this issue, and of course, the current issue and any other issues, hour after hour after hour. I myself, and Lou, and the other board members, I had to leave, we were discussing this issue not in a smoke-filled room, but out of the car, with Lou for about an hour and a half, discussing this and the other issue today. So a lot of time and effort goes into making these decisions, and quite frankly, they're not easy issues. They're not black and white. If they're black and white, they would be easy. So they're, but, you know, I kind of enjoy that type of thing, representing my government, representing you, to do what's best for the community. So with that in mind, a couple of questions, a couple of comments. First off, I believe this requires the county to comment on this.
No. We hand-delivered the request, the 239 request, October 12, October 19.
Right, to the county.
To the county. They have 39, 30 days.
They should respond.
Right, 30 days if wants it.
Right, and if they don't respond, then it just becomes, look...
It becomes a loop.
Right. Basically, they're just saying, we're not going to, we're going to not talk to you. That, to me, doesn't sound like the county of Orange, though. They usually make a comment one way or the other. So I don't know if it got lost in transition or anything, so that's, that's an issue that I would like to hear, what the county has to say. Maybe I won't be able to do that, but I understand your points.
And just, George, just like you know, we as an applicant, we can't, we can't other agency. That 239 review has to come from the municipality.
Right, right. Second thing is, you've stated that you have some interest, some interest has been created on this particular parcel. Can you comment on what that some interest is?
I personally can't comment on that. All my clients, NU3 LLC, have told me that there's some interest in it. There's commercially related, commercial-related interest, and it would be their best interest in, you know, to see if we can get this some...
Right, right.
But just to let you know, whatever it is, you know, it's still subject to, it's like plan reviews, and all the other...
Oh, yeah, I understand. This did go to our planning board, and there was a 5-2 vote, right, in favor of the zone change. Is that correct? That's what we discussed. Yeah, that is right, right. The back part that you're talking about, this issue, this thing that you just gave me here, that has, you know, I have great interest in that particular area. I understand the concept, because it gives you a bigger parcel, it's 9.7 acres, I guess, of that, quite just compared to what you have in front now. But it looks like, I mean, I didn't get, I just got this here, but it looks like it would render the back part, the part on all of Gate School House Road, really, you wouldn't be able to do anything with that. Almost, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. But is it in fact true what the gentleman said, that if this takes place, the entrance and exit from this particular parcel will be off Gate School House Road and not 17M?
Regardless whether you approve the zone change or not, access could be off of Gate School House Road. There's nothing in your residential code that restricts vehicular access.
Right, so even if this changed, or didn't change at all, you would still have the opportunity of entrance and exit probably from Gate School House Road.
Honestly, I can't tell you whether... But you would have the opportunity to do that.
Okay. I think that answers the questions that I have there. I'm really betwixt and between, but, you know, it's decision time, and my decision would be to not change the zone.
Ken?
Okay, you guys go first.
Well, you're going to go next time, when the next one first.
That's good. This is not working. This is not the first time, that I've been here 14 years, that property has been looked at as a commercial area. And it's been denied every time it's come here. We've had some guy wanted a truck stop there, another guy wanted this and that. And also, I agree with Phil, we spent lots of money on the zone. Plenty of opportunities for people to come and say, we object to that, or give some insight. If I own land, residential land on Gate School House Road, especially the new people just build their homes out there, I'd be kind of disappointed at this board if I were to have voted for this change. They're built with residential, commercially, with trucks, traffic, et cetera, so put that there in residential area, my vote would be no.
Thank you, Ken. Lou?
Well, just so you know, across the street from that part that they like to change is commercial, and it butts up to those new houses there, so I don't know how that ever happened. I've visited this property many times, I don't know how they can do anything in the back, because it goes way up and it comes way down. I mean, it's like, it's a valley there, and I think the only thing they probably would get out of this is that they have more footage to possibly do something based on the code. The other thing, too, is that I read the response from our planning board, and the planning board has reviewed the application and they feel, based on its configuration, and it is one partial, that they recommended that it stays all the same type of zoning, and they recommended that it all should be Highway Commercial, and it was a 5-2 the vote. And I have to say, I have to go along with the planning board.
My view is, basically, my concern is Gate School Road is a residential area, 17M is a commercial area. And I remember back when we were going through, in 2004, and then again in 2008, we went through excruciating efforts to zone different parcels. And we had scenic overviews, and we had residential areas, and we tried to keep those kind of things out, away from industrial, commercial, and others. And to me, I see this kind of as a creep towards the residential. And so I think that, I'm going to state that what we already have as well, and it looks with the 2008 master plan. So with that, would someone like to make a motion then, in the positive, regarding the request by NU3 LLC for a request, a zoning map change for four acres from RU to Highway Commercial, in regard to the total parcel, was 9.74 acre parcel, tax map 12-1-47. Is there a second? Would someone like to make that motion?
One more.
Any discussion beyond what we said?
Well, I just want to make sure that we're all on board here as far as what... Well, I just want to make sure that we're all on board here as far as what, what we're doing, what, A or N.
Tell me this.
Right, yeah. It is. So if in fact, we are, if we vote in favor of this, we are saying that we are in favor of the zone change.
That's correct.
If we vote no, we are not.
That's correct. Because the, the motion is in the positive.
Right.
Uh, Madam Court, can we roll call vote, please?
Councilman Cattarell?
Nay.
Councilman Lyons?
Nay.
Councilman Newhall?
No.
Councilman Heller?
Yes.
Supervisor Bluefield?
No, motion is not carried. Thank you very much. All right, the next one is, we have a request for, by James Dillon, to rezone a tax map parcel, section twelve, block one, lot two point three, on tax map, uh, okay, on the tax map. And they want to rezone this from RU slash CO to industrial. Would someone like to make a motion and we open the public, reopen the public hearing regarding this request? So, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Right, you have to tell me you're gonna use it. Got it. Is yours working again?
It is.
What can we use yours over here, says?
We do more than you do. We do temporarily anyways.
Yeah. Would you pass that one? Yeah. We just need a travel on the other side. It's not moving.
I'm representing the applicant in this zone change, who is Darlene Kerr. The Currie family has owned this property for approximately forty-five years. Uh, the property is located on Harley Road. Uh, it's a thirty-one acre parcel. The map I show, uh, on the board now is the existing zone of the property. Uh, the thirty-one acres is adjacent to the Heritage Trail. It's at the sharp bend in Harley Road. Uh, it's across from the old landfill, and the back of it is the, uh, county jail. Uh, the property at the present is split up into two zones. Uh, the front portion of the property is sixty percent RU, which is the light green here, and the back forty percent of the property, which is on the other side of a stream and a wetland area, is the CO commercial zone. Uh, the Curries have been marketing this property for, for several years, probably ten years now, and there's no interest. Uh, this zone was originally an industrial zone on all the property. I believe two thousand four it got changed and it got split into a residential zone and a commercial zone, which virtually makes any reasonable use of this property in the configuration that it's in now is, to develop the commercial zone, you'd have to go right through the residential zone, which wouldn't be a good, I don't know really how it got changed that way, and that's really why we're here. Uh, the application that I've submitted, uh, for Darlene Kerr is to change the zone from CO and RU to an industrial zone. We have stated that we have interest, a party interested in possibly doing a mulch facility on this site. We haven't made an application to this board for that, and we haven't applied for a special use permit, which I think it requires, and it also requires site plan approval. Public hearing was, notice was given that this is just for a zone change, and I believe that's why we're here. And that's really basically all we're doing. We're trying to just configure, reconfigure our property to have one, uh, industrial zone, which would look exactly like this, and it would be contiguous to industrial, uh, zone right across the street.
Okay. Does anyone in the audience have any comments that relative to this, you know?
Now I get the right case now.
How about, oh, you can have the microphone, yes. Thank you.
As I say, I report the case to an ONG environmental organization about five residents in Chichang Road that are canceled during my stay in there for more than fifteen years. I'm one of the victims there. And that's why my concern is, once we change to industrialize, what kind of business we're talking about, what kind of material we're using about, what kind of operation we're talking about, that is my concern. Because I don't want to see my neighbor have another cancer. I don't want to see my across street have another cancer. Because Goshen is a beautiful place to live. Chichang is wonderful, but certainly, we changed the whole landscape. So regarding the mulch, regarding the compost, I did organic farming, I did harmony farm right in Goshen. I was in Molokai Island in Hawaii, just learn about compost, just learn about organic farming. I know what can be very dangerous. It can be safe as well. I'm not saying it's always dangerous. It depends on how we operate. So my concern is, I'd like to know more about what kind of material we're gonna use, how we're gonna operate. If that is really a safe way to do it, I have no objections. Other than that, I'm really against any kind of change without concerning the environmental, without concerning community, safety. That's all.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Well, rest assured, if this zoning change occurs.
Yes.
And they are applying for a permit to do what they want to do, there don't have to be a lot of site plan review, or environmental review, et cetera, et cetera. And so much more work will be done.
Okay.
Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir. You can use that mic up on the, on the, yeah.
My name is Josh Owen of the one twenty-six Chichang Road. Uh, I have a few comments, actually. Number one, since two thousand four, four brand new houses have actually been built along Chichang, making it a much more residential area. Uh, so based on the board's previous argument of approaching upon residential areas, this would all pretty much fall on the same lines. Uh, second, if we do put something in like a composting, uh, facility, despite all kinds of site plans, you know, what about the smell and other environmental effects to build local residents? Once again, this is now a larger residential area. Uh, number two, you know, increasing industrial areas amongst residential areas will only further decrease our property values, which as residents moved in two thousand six, I've only watched my property value plummet. Uh, we're already putting an OR, an OR, Orange Mountain substation in the area. We already have the jail right on Chichang or off of six and a half station road, as well as a transfer station. Uh, this is largely a residential area. I don't think any changes should be done. I feel sorry for the owner that they've been trying to sell it for ten years, but maybe making it more residential and letting them sell it that way would be a more palatable way for the residents who live in that area.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Mr. Strong? Can we just pass the mic back to Mr. Strong if no sense?
Thank you. I'm sure you're sick of seeing me.
No, we're not. It's pretty as you are, we're ready to see you.
If I knew you were coming, I would comb my hair.
Anyway, I'm here, I'm Gene, excuse me, I'm Gene Strong. I live on Chichang Road. I've been there for sixty-four years. And I strongly, my daughters, my two daughters and my husband strongly oppose any change in the zoning, especially to industrial. You know what we put up with, with the landfill and all the other, the jail, the power lines, everything else. We can't take any more chances on, on the value of our property decreasing or health effects from this change, so I urge the board to see it the way it is. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Sir?
My name is Tom Mulain. I have a private road off Chichang. All right, my property actually bordered Peter's, my friend here. Now, I built my house in two thousand and two, all right? Now, I don't want to go into my personal things, but I pay seventeen thousand dollars a year in property taxes, all right, which I knew going in. I knew the jail was there, okay? I knew that the landfill was there, the transfer station, I can hear the backup alarm, clear as day. The sound carries very far. Again, I knew that was there when I moved in. I camped on the property for a week, just to hear everything, all right? You know, that I knew coming in. But I really oppose any more land, land use changes, especially to industrial. And I believe it was you, Mr. Supervisor, who used the word encroaching, all right? It will start encroaching, all right? These are not very small houses that the gentleman was just referring to that are built. These, we spent a lot of money in taxes, right, high dollar, you know, which is why I agree with the reassessment. We're assessed up here, everybody else is down here.
You like it lower, right?
We need to come here. No, I'll be happy with here.
I knew you were above average.
I don't need, I don't need to go on this side. I would just like to come down and be in the middle. I'll be very happy with that.
Okay, me too.
I just feel in this area, and just real quick, my private road is right here. I don't know if you guys can see that. That's my private road.
Okay.
This is my parcel.
All right, all right.
The sound from Harley Road.
Sure.
It comes right through here. And again, that's my problem. I knew all that when I moved in.
Right.
It's pretty loud. During the weekend, it's real peaceful, but seventeen M, you know, we get a lot of truck traffic, and you can hear that. Uh, so if you change that site, now, we don't know what's gonna go there. We all heard it was a composting, mulching facility. To my knowledge, and I did research this, they make a lot of noise, and how, I don't know what kind of trucks are gonna be coming in, but there's only that very small covert coming over that creek, coming from seventeen M to get to Chichang Road. I don't know how any trucks are gonna cross that, right? It gets washed out several times a year, even without a Lear IRE. Uh, so again, I just greatly oppose any land use change there. It is encroaching. You know, it's a good buffer now, but the industrial, it is so encroaching upon the residential, and I just think that, you know, we pay a lot in taxes to move there with these brand new homes, and, you know, that's why I oppose it. You know, thanks for listening.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Sir? Sure, please. Thank you.
Well.
Microphone. Can you get the microphone, yeah? See, everything's recorded in the microphone, that's why we use it.
My background's agricultural. I'm a hillbilly from Mississippi State University.
Okay.
And I, my graduate school also in, uh.
You like driving up those, uh?
Yes, I'm a hillbilly. You know, my moonshot. Okay, just about.
All right, yeah.
I, I love land. Land is my mother. Land is the life, okay? However, a piece of land in Chichang Road here is all poison so far. Because a couple of years ago, I made a request, asked EDP to do a survey, to do a study. They could not give me a right answer. So that's why I talked to the ONG Environmental. They request again, I don't know if they make success or not, but as I say, they are six victims.
Yeah, already.
All of that, three people move out. Of course, the new people move in. The old people know about it, they move out. I'm even considered moved to Oregon myself. My brother, my brother-in-law also considered to move back to Five One as well. And my sister, my wife's sister lived in Chichang Road, one thirty-three, she moved to New Jersey. These are the facts. This piece of land already had some problems there. I have no scientific way to prove it, just from my personal observation. So please, leave them alone. This is the mother of people's life. Land is the mother. Don't touch it, please.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Oh, he passed it. Mike, back to Ms. Allen.
Donna Allen, one thirty-eight Chichang. I was just wondering, at the last meeting, I had posed a few questions to the board, and then I also submitted additional questions in writing at your request, Supervisor Bluefield. I was just wondering if anyone had a chance to take a look at those questions, and if anyone has any answers for me.
Now, when we look at the questions, we're not in a position to answer them. If this proceeds on, they will be answered.
Yeah.
But they are part of the record.
Very good, thank you.
But I appreciate your time putting all that together. Anyone else? All right, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
One more. Second.
Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ken, I'm gonna start with you on this one.
Well, thank you. I have nothing to say.
That'd be a first.
Yeah, wouldn't it? It would. You're exactly right. Um, this one is more complex because, um, definitely Harley Road out there, that section of town is kind of, was like a war zone to me personally, and the noise and the pollution, et cetera, we've heard here, it's definitely, uh, the truth. My concern was back then, is to say, would this be considered spot zoning? I mean, can a guy on K D Road decide that, gee, maybe I'd like to put a house over here, so let's, our building, let's make this commercial? I'm not quite sure if this is considered, uh, a spot zone, that's what I would like to look at. And as far as restriction of due, under code about well openings and entrances, that would be solved at the planning board level if it was approved, but hearing from these people, and I guess the town, once again, the planning board has allowed these new homes to be built, like the other one. That town stuck in the middle. We love, I love commercial, we need rate, we need ratables, but on this one, I guess I'm gonna have to like get it over on the other one. They probably couldn't sell them every ten years for obvious reasons, so what, put the burden on, they can't sell them, so let's put the burden on the other people and let them live with the industrial parcel. I don't have to say again, this one, I would approve this one.
George?
Um, again, in my due diligence today in discussing this with a number of different people, I now turn to our counsel, who stated to me that, well, it's supposed to be, if there's going to be a zone change, then also, there's a special use permit that effectively we should be doing in tandem, basically at the same time. So if the approval was taken, let's say we say, yes, we think this makes, uh, sense, this special use permit would also have to be done by us now, when in fact, when I spoke with Jim earlier this afternoon, he hasn't even made a, uh, an application.
Has he made an application or something?
Correct, correct. Yeah, just so the board understands, yes and no here, it's a question of, George. Uh, procedurally, much like you did on the prior application, new, you're proceeding in the absolute proper manner based upon state law, our, especially our code and how it's set up. There would be a special permit required, which again, is this board's decision, but in each instance, both on the zone change and on the special use, they would have to be secret. No, you'd have to do your environmental hard look, if you will, and study it. So by doing it in the manner you're presently doing, all you are accomplishing at the present moment is a public hearing on the zoning change. I would not allow you, or I shouldn't say that, I would recommend if you not vote to either approve, uh, to approve the zoning amendment, okay, or zoning change, without the discussion you're having now, because if there is a consensus prior to an affirmative vote for the zone change, this matter should go to a coordinated, consolidated review by this board and the planning board for purposes of the zone change, the special use which is coming, and at that moment, we, I'd also recommend to the applicant that they file their site plan with the planning board, that application, so that you could have one consolidated, coordinated public hearing by both boards to accomplish the secret studies and take the necessary action. So if you follow what's gonna, what will occur is similar to your prior action on new, on that application. If the consensus, and I can count as well as anybody else, that's why I praised it in that manner earlier, if the consensus is such that the zoning change is not favored by the board, we would end it tonight. by the board, we would end it tonight by a negative vote and allow the applicant to go their own way. If the discussion indicates a possible affirmative vote, I still would recommend you not take a formal vote this evening, but proceed in the manner I just indicated. I would frame the motion for you for a consolidated joint public hearing in the future, at which time seeker would be done both on the zoning change concept and the site plan and the special use. Because otherwise, in fairness to all applicants on all your planning matters, they're ping pong to death, and it needlessly costs them money. Because as Mr. Dillon just mentioned, there is no application from the planning board now. For them to proceed, there would have to be. But for you to change the zoning, you need it to be secret. That involves some of potentially the same studies as the planning board would conduct, as you need to conduct, on the zone change, the special use, and again, the planning board, the site plan level. All right? So in a roundabout way, George, that's why I said it was yes and no, in terms of response to your question.
Right. Uh, we have or have not heard from the county?
I believe on this, we have heard from the county, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't have a letter. I have a planning board letter, but...
Well, I'm looking, George. What do you want with your comments? And I'll see. The, 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 the planning, this never went to the planning board for...
No, it wasn't, no, I have a planning board letter.
Oh, and what does, what did the planning board check?
In me reading the letter, they seem to have no objections. Do you want to read?
Did, yeah, I would like to see that. So to help. It wasn't a split vote or anything? Or just a...
It doesn't give a vote. It's just, why don't we just read it into the record?
Do you want me to read yours?
Phil, do you have a copy of that in the record?
I don't believe I do. I have a...
Well, go ahead and read it, George. Okay, at the meeting of October 20th, the planning board reviewed the current zone change requested by the town board for comment, and authorized our office to convey its comments to the application. The current application noted that the purpose of the requested zone change was to use the property as a composting facility. The planning board noted that a composting facility is not permitted in the RU district under 97-58 of the town code, unless it's located on a farm operation, but would be permitted in an industrial district. Given the configuration of the lot, the planning board had concerns with access to the site by truck traffic, but recognized that these concerns would be addressed during the site plan review process. The planning board could not identify any detriment to the town if the requested zone change was granted, but did see a benefit to the applicant. Additionally, the planning board commented that the permitted use in the RU district do not really seem appropriate for this property. Let me just read that again. The planning board commented that the permitted uses in the RU district do not really seem appropriate for this property. She's got any questions or comments, and that was signed by, uh, Mr. Golden, the planning board attorney.
Thanks, George.
And, uh, just following up on George's point, yeah, my file does not indicate if we have any reply from the county.
County at all.
Correct. Referrals mandatory, but I have no comment.
Counsel, the new ball said before, if in fact, we were to do this, this would be construed as spot zoning. Is that in fact correct?
Why didn't I say what? I said, is that...
Yeah.
I wanted to ask a question, because, you know, spot zone to me means that, you know, you're taking a totally different category, plopping it right in the middle of something else, and there is contiguous eye.
I can answer that, George. And I, I wouldn't, and I'm talking from what I know, that if you're going to do a zone change, you have to be contiguous to the same zone. You can't just lay industrial zone in the middle of a property and not touch anything. And as you can see, we touched the old, uh, Alterye landfill, so that isn't...
It isn't construed as spot zoning, is it?
Uh, let me see if there's anything else I had here. Um, I wanted one...
Can you turn that around, George, please?
That's the way it is. If the zone change takes place, could you just flip that back to the way it is now for one more time, so I can take a look at that?
Yeah, as we are down, we have this CO in the back of our property. Any kind of development would have to run through residential home.
Right, right. I see, right.
Is that true?
True.
Oh, yeah. Isn't that that road, room there?
No, this is a street.
No, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about that road right there.
That's a Alterye Trail.
Oh, okay.
All right. And so where, where is Hartley Road?
Alterye Road is...
Oh, through here. I see. Okay. Right. Um, this is, it may not be told to you many times, but it is, it is a question that's on my mind. Mrs. Allen talked about the fact that you have to have 200 feet of road frontage in order to meet the specifications for a site plan. How would you intend to do that?
The planning board.
I know, it's planning board, but I have two, I have two answers for that. I don't know whether road frontage or what you're talking about, or if it's really lot width you're talking about, which is measured at the minimum setback line. And we, this lot is non-conforming to existence, and it's always been that way.
So the entrance and exit would be at that point?
At that?
The, the point there, if you're looking at that.
Right there, yes.
Right, I see. Yes, all right. Well, it's a dilemma for me, batting, batting it back and forth, but I'm going to go for the zone change.
Okay, Lou?
It works. This one's a tough one. They're all tough when you're, when you're dealing with the public. I have some information here, and I know that they're looking to have this property changed, but back in 2004, this property was industrial property, and they changed it. Whoever did the zoning change, at that time, I wasn't here, they changed it, and I don't know what, for what reason, they changed it when it was right in the middle of it, all being industrial. So I don't know why Mrs. Currie didn't argue that point back then.
Just to answer that, I don't think she ever really knew.
And you know something, you're probably right, because when I got here in 2000, at the end of 2004, a lot of people weren't aware of what was happening with some of the zone changes. And I can, I confirm to that.
She just completed the subdivision, and she sold the property, where they built that new shop next to her house, and it was industrial then, and she just, I don't think she ever knew. Darling is here, they've never got changed.
It was, it was always industrial. I always thought it was...
But I looked at the records, so, you know, I just wanted to make sure what was written here was true. I, I have gone up and down that road several, several times, just for this, and I, I know Chichang Road is around the bend, but I couldn't see anybody building a house on that road, as far as Hartley Road. At least, I would never put a house there. I can't ever see this to be residential, ever. It just doesn't make any sense. So, uh, I don't know how it's going to go forward, and how the planning board's going to handle this, and if you're going to get your compost, but as far as the zoning change, I have to say yes.
Thank you, Lou. Phil?
This is, they're all very difficult, because no matter which decision you make, someone is going to be upset and someone is going to be happy. And the thing, and we have spent a lot of time on this, but we, as George had indicated, it's not something we take lightly, especially zoning changes, because that's, to me, is very, very traumatic. If it had always been industrial, the thing that I'm concerned about is the part that is commercial. If they develop that to something else, and the rest will be residential, then there'll be trucks and things going through the residential area. That's probably, in order to get to the commercial piece, if that's the only way they can get there.
I think that's one of our points.
I think that's one of the biggest problems. To be honest with you, I'm not in favor of changing zoning, because we've done a lot of work, and we've looked at this, and it's difficult for me to, to really agree with all the areas. But on this one, I think the sentiment thing would be maybe to make the industrial, but here's the problem. I don't want to leave anyone else off, the applicants who are going to go into something, because it's going to require a special use permit. That's number two. And when they come down here for a special use permit, which is going to be very, very expensive to do the seeker process, I want to make sure that we have not been, have not legally encouraged someone to do something by changing the zoning, and then finding out that we're going to get sued, because they can't do it, they can't get a special use, nor will the planning board pass it. So I've got a number of issues that I'm concerned about. So that's, that's really where I'm at. The only problem is the access. That's the thing, if I were to change it, would be because you would need access. How large is that parcel of property now?
Oh, the property's 30 what acres. But it, but in all fairness, there's probably...
Wetland, it's all wet.
There's probably, and flood plain.
Yes.
There's probably 10 acres that may be unusable. In addition, there's a 200-foot strip of power line that goes right through this property.
Right. I know the property well.
It's severely encumbered, and I, you know, I said that in my original narrative of how this is encumbered. So the real use of this property is going to be very limited anyway, no matter what we do.
It's going to be very limited on a residential basis. And how much effect will it have on, and once again, I'm very concerned with the people that have spent money and built houses, understanding that that was a residential parcel of property, and now they find that they're adjacent to a, a commercial piece of property. So I'm not sure how much of an effect that will have on these people, and that's another of my concerns. But, uh, I probably will have to agree that that particular parcel should be set in commercial. I think, listening to all the facts and stuff, I think that's probably where I'm coming from.
All right, thank you, Lou. All right, Phil?
No.
Oh, yeah. This is the most difficult one I've seen in a long time. It's really too bad that the zoning changed 2004, uh, because a lot of buildings going on since 2004, based on, I'm sorry, since this thing was, was changed to residential. It's not a very big residential piece of property, and I don't know what you're going to do with that back part, uh, if you, if it's residential. I would like, I'd like to comment.
Do we have to vote on this now, or do we discuss this at this point together? Can we just start?
Well, I'm not finished yet, guys.
No, no, I'm sorry, I don't need to cut you off. Do we need to vote?
Well, Dennis is going to give us instructions on what to do.
If we were thinking of voting yes, we would change.
We've got to...
He would suggest that he wouldn't vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry, Tim.
Well, that's part of the answer, that's correct.
Okay, good.
But I have to address it more.
That's good.
The, uh, can someone help me again with these homes? How, how recently were they built? Yes, sir?
Um, I'm one of the four brand-new houses that were built.
What's brand-new?
Well, originally, 126 Chichang, which is just past Owens, going down towards, uh, coming back towards Burke.
Towards the highway, or whatever.
That's where the highway. And the first of those houses was built in 2003 or '04. My house went up in 2005, and I moved in in 2006. So those are four brand-new houses, which all came in after that zoning. I would never have purchased my property knowing that there was going to be, you know, possibility of a compost, well as a jail, and, and, you know, already industrial there.
Yes.
Uh, I bought my house in 2005, but if, if the board wouldn't mind taking a look at, I have a copy of the flood plain and bonding area overlay.
Right.
You can see, the only section of that lot that they would really be able to use is the section that's closest to the residential home.
Right.
Can you see that?
Which...
On, on this map would be this area right here. Kind of like that. So this area here is the only area, in my opinion, not really knowing, you know, I'm just, you know, I'm just a homeowner, but this would be the only area that would be useful, and that's the area that's closest to the home. It just, it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, in that regard, let me ask a question, that being RU. Why can't that be sold for a home?
Because you didn't see the rest of the property.
No, the rest of the property is, is almost not usable.
Because the, um, arche rock and wires go right over the property.
In that corner, no, they go down the edge of it, this other edge.
Right. You have to go out there.
You have to drive, you have to drive under 200-foot wide.
No, I understand that. But that, that, that portion that, that, as Allen just pointed out, that's the closest, that one right there.
We're going to be a few hundred feet away from the transfer station if it goes up. He's doing the transfer station.
Well, that shouldn't be a problem.
For residential, I think every person in this, this room who's complaining, who's complaining about the transfer station.
My position is, I can't support the zoning change.
Can I just ask a question about what the gentleman pointed out about the commercial property? Before even a commercial property went up, wouldn't that have to be board approval anyway? Even though it's zone commercial? So, I'm just curious.
You asking me?
Yeah, well, I...
You got that.
I apologize, but that's...
Please ask it again. I want to...
The gentleman pointed out that, you know, if part of that property is zone commercial, there would be concern about where trucks would come in. I mean, that would be a bridge to cross when we came to it, because the board would have to approve any property going up there anyway, and that's the residential area, because the truck is at that time.
That, that's correct.
This part down here is all wet, part that is commercial. Most of this is wet.
It's wet in the middle. There is a good piece of...
So, so really, yeah, I'm, I'm just, the more information you get, the more, uh, moves you. Anyway, you know, if they have those kinds of things, it's all, it's probably not really a job of zoning.
I, I know that. Yeah, well, it's...
Okay. Well, just, just so you know, there's a different weight limit on Hartley Road right now versus Chichang Road, as far as what trucks are allowed to go in and out. Uh, and we have made a lot of adjustments when, on roads, when we saw the, you know, traffic. We even did it on, uh, there's weight limits.
And, and trucks are not allowed on Chichang Road?
I, I, I know there's a different, I know there's a different weight limit on Chichang Road versus Hartley Road.
Now, we just have a lot of, uh...
They can't use that for, they can't use it for a shortcut and so forth. That's why you, you don't see...
That's why we voted.
That's why you don't see anybody that's going interstate ways coming that way, because they can't, they get ticketed. I just want you to understand that. So there is control on that, and we tried to.
Yeah, for us, all time, Charlie goes, uh, those have used it down there. We, we went about a year, but they finally convinced us to lower, lower the weight limit. This is a good idea.
And we even lowered the speed limit.
Are we, Dennis, that the straw vote is two or three?
Yeah, I need clarification on counsel, Ken.
Phil, what is your position?
Yeah, I need clarification on it, Phil. I'm just confused as to where you fall on it.
Well, I probably, if I had to make the decision tonight based on all the information, I probably wouldn't.
Yeah, I need clarification on it, Phil. I'm just confused as to where you fall on it.
Well, I probably, if I had to make the decision tonight based on all the information, I probably wouldn't.
You would not? I don't see, okay. All right, now let me say this to you. The board seems to be split three, two. As I mentioned to you in prior application, in fairness to the applicant, if there is not a consensus to go forward with this application, it's not fair to force them to go through a site plan, special use permit, and all your secret studies. So in fairness to them, and with under state law, you have the right and authority to do this, you can make a decision now.
That's an invigil.
If you feel depositing that you would wish to change it, then you have other procedures to follow. And some of the comments are correct, you go to another board, plus this board again on special use permit, and you have a coordinated review of the secret.
Okay, based on that, would someone like to make a motion in depositive regarding the request by James Dillon to rezone the tax map parcel, Section 12, Block 1, Lot 47, on the tax map, from RU slash CO to industrial?
Shall I move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. What Phil brought up before, about the fact of, in fact, we make a zoning change, then in fact, are we really setting ourselves up for a lawsuit because we made the change, and then we don't grant the special use permit, or the planning board doesn't allow it because of all of the hoops that the people have to go through? Are we in fact setting ourselves up for?
Not necessarily. What the board has to realize, the law is such that the zoning at the present time does not permit this use. If you change the zoning, that use is permitted, it's permissible.
No, it still needs a special use permit.
But the special use permit is special requirements. It's a, it's an application which upon proper submission by the applicant, expenditure of money, monies, preparation of studies, ameliorating any detrimental effects of it, but what I'm saying to you is, at the present time, and again, that's why applicants come here, many times in the zoning changes, you cannot do this. With a zoning change, you can do it subject to all those conditions and modifications potentially, and/or requirements. It's a very, well, that's the law, but it's a concept that's important you understand, and if you have any questions on it, I'd be glad to expand on it, but it's a very important concept, you know, and concept you want to stand.
For example, I think one of the questions, the two-hundred-foot frontage and all that kind of thing, would not be a barrier, would it?
It would not.
It would not be a barrier.
Because, you know why? Because that's where, and I've heard him say this before, your ZBA comes in.
Right.
Because if the zoning permits it, variance is going to be obtained for any number of rationale reasons. A zoning board should not, in fact, it's illegal, it's absolutely improper and illegal, not in a criminal sense. The zoning board or ZBAs cannot change the zoning, only you can. That's why these applications have to come forward.
Right. So if I, if I. We're voting yes for this, we're going to approve the zoning change.
That's correct.
No one is leaving it as it is.
That's.
Okay, so one last question, Dennis. If I'm voting for it tonight for the zoning change, I might very well vote against it if, vote against the special use permit, based on whatever the factors are there.
Correct.
And that's, I'm not.
Could you just say that?
I'm not betting less.
I'll repeat it, I'll repeat it again.
If I was voting for the zoning change today, I very, I shouldn't say easily, but conceivably could vote against the special use permit. If in fact I do that, based on hearing all of the stuff that comes in through the special use permit, am I jeopardizing the town?
It can be.
For this reason, this is crucial, you understand this concept.
It's crucial that you understand this concept, all right?
It has to do with the comments I made earlier about zoning change and what the permissible zoning is. Simply put, in layman's terms, at the present time, it is not permissible to have this type of use in that parcel because of the zoning. There is no application they can ever make to get approval for this use unless this board, the town board, changes the zoning, either through a zoning change or from rezoning the town, et cetera. So what I'm saying to you, George, is in non-layman terms, or in layman's terms, I should say, at the special use permit consideration, by definition, you start from the premise, the zoning permits this use, there are special considerations or reasons you want to further restrict, require, modify, if you will, the use of it. That's where the special use permit comes in. So what I'm basically saying to you is that if you rezone, you may have the right to vote nay or yea on any special use permit, but there will be criteria that as long as the applicant is willing to meet, you are jeopardizing your position in the event you then deny the special use permit.
When you say meet, you know, you're talking about meeting the things that the planning board will prove about.
Actually, they or this board.
That's what I'm just saying.
Correct. And they could be, let me give you an analogous example, it's a poor one, but maybe a crystallized point. There's almost no, in fact, there is no property in the world that can't be built upon, including a solid rock on the edge of a cliff. Because if a special permit was required, in that instance you would, far as septic or drainage and/or sewage treatment, if you will, you could require an applicant to dig out the rock and bring in fill, sand, whatever, so that the lot or land would perk. Now, it would be prohibitively expensive, it would be terribly onerous, almost denying the applicant right to do that, but you could condition it so that if the applicant had unlimited resources, they might be willing to do that. And once again, it's going to be their private home, and they want to live on a cliff, a rock cliff, et cetera. And it's the same thing with special use permits. By definition, it's a permissible use where you have special environmental planning, zoning concerns, or even physicality, about the use or the property, which you're going to require more onerous or maybe economically expensive terms for the applicant to use the property for that zoning purpose, which is permissible. So by definition, it's permissible, it's a question of what conditions are placed on. Follow what I'm saying? In other words, I don't want to give you the wrong impression, this is a whole different issue, but special use permits, within reason, are fait accompli. Okay? It's the requirements, it's the conditions, it's the severity of the restrictions you put on, which you have every right to do, which in other instances, boards effectively deny the use by making special conditions so onerous that the applicant's like, my God, Donald Trump couldn't afford to do that. It's enough. Without you denying the special use permit, if you deny it, an applicant, you're exposing yourself, you know, to liability in a sense, look at your question, that if I was seeking a special use permit, by definition, I'm entitled to it. It's a question of how many hoops you're going to make me jump through, and if you're saying no, we're going to court. Assuming I can spend those monies or meet those conditions. Okay, you understand what I'm saying? The nuances are very important to understand.
No, I, I think I understand.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
It's just that the special use permit, I, planning board, have pretty great latitude in what we can require.
Yes.
It's just that we couldn't say, okay, you do these ten things, the applicant does all of the ten things, and then turn around and say, nah, we still don't like it.
But you're exposing yourself at that time to some risk.
We now have kind of, the die is cast.
You crossed the road now.
If they in fact have done those ten things, but I still have a great latitude in making or, making them do a lot of different types of things.
Absolutely.
And I think our environmentally.
If you think about it, a special use permit is like another bite of the apple. Your planning board seekers and studies it to death, you in turn do the same, and you can make even more onerous requirements than are even in your code, because you have a special concern or interest to protect for the community at large in modifying or requiring something under that special use permit.
I understand. All right, any other questions you're doing session?
I want to say one thing, I want to thank everyone that came out tonight for the public hearing. It's both about public hearing, it's one person, two people, not the end of it. But more importantly, it gives you an opportunity to see how hard this board works. I'll piggyback what George said before, there's never a done deal in this board, we come to this meeting on a regular basis, but, okay, I don't always agree. Yeah, and that's why I'm proud to be on this board. Phil, Lou, we dig, we digest these sometimes five or six times, as we're doing tonight, and we've already discussed this for a couple of hours. So I'm proud of this board, I'm proud of our professionals, and I thank you for coming out. That's what this is all about, it's your town in Italian.
And I also think it's important for the public to be aware of this, media included, is that, that's how you guys, this board has always operated. And if you notice, this discussion, which we just had.
Are you giving them this legal advice? I don't know if too many boards would have that in public. They have it in executive session or behind closed doors, where the public has no idea what's going on, the applicant has no idea what's going on, and you've got to weigh the respective interests. And again, you should be commended for having that type of discussion, which obviously we didn't have any other times, so it's important to take tonight. Okay, I want to get this again set in my mind, that a yes vote for this resolution means you are in favor of the zoning change. A no vote would, it would remain the way it is.
That's correct.
That's correct. All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Counselor Saffronino?
No.
Counselor Lyons?
Yes.
How can you vote?
No.
I'll speak to Paul.
Yeah.
Sure, I have a little field.
No, motion is not carried. Thank you very much. And I also would like to thank everybody for all their input, and these are difficult decisions, and it was easy, we wouldn't be here.
What's also great, this is one, we can agree to disagree, we just want the next issue.
Thank you very much, everyone, we're very sorry that it took so long.
Thank you, John.
All right, the next lady. Wait till we try to approve the best of prior key, guys, that'll be. Okay, we need to proceed on, folks, if you can kind of exit the. Go ahead.
People like.
Okay, gentlemen.
Be there.
I'll get it, I'll get it, okay?
Get out of here.
We'll violate the First Amendment, I'd say.
Excuse me, gentlemen, I just have a second.
Okay, now we have some background information on these minutes. Nothing is very simple, but Priscilla put together for us that Phil, you were at all the meetings.
That's all right.
Now, George, you were not.
I missed one.
Yes, you did. Which one was it, Eric? It was the 27th of October. So would someone like to make a motion, that we approve the minutes, the minutes of the, the minutes, the minutes of regular meeting of October 27, 2011?
So, second.
And George, you can't vote on this. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Only on the 24th?
No, we're just doing 27.
Okay, so I'm staying on the 24th.
All the other three, you were here.
Right.
So, on the other three minutes, uh, meeting minutes, would someone like to make a motion regarding the minutes of work sessions of October 24th and November 10th, and the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2011?
So, second.
Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That was easy.
It was, we.
We were all here for it. Now, this next item is, I was invited to a minute, I mean, to a meeting of the Orange County Soil and Water Conservation District, and we have meetings at least once a year, if not more often. And what we do is we talk about the maintenance of the Walk Hill River. And, so, we had a meeting this past week, and for the board, you can see the minutes of the meeting, it was December 6th, Tuesday. And basically, the first thing they reviewed was the status of the maintenance activities and our fund balance after those activities for the year 2011. I'd like to refresh everybody's memory regarding what was done this year. We normally do maintenance in the Walk Hill River, and we snag out down trees, dead trees, and debris that is in the river or in the floodway. And the floodway being, you've got the trench of the river, and then when the water comes up, it then goes over into a floodway, and then it continues to go up, and then it goes over the banks, and it's into the flood plain. So what they try to do is maintain the floodway and the actual acts, the portion of the river where the water flows. And so that's the annual maintenance, and that was done every year, just snagging out dead trees, et cetera, the things that could catch other debris if we had a flood, and would retard the water flow. This past year, 2011, actually, 2011, this year, there was another plan, a proposal, if you recall, Legislative Hooky came in here and talked to us about it. And basically what it was, from the, I think it was Pellet Island Bridge, Pellet Island Bridge, partway up towards 17M to the Gersbeck Farm. What the intent there was, is they, instead of just pulling out the dead trees and debris, they wanted to cut some trees this year. And so the DEC came down and marked some trees in the floodway, and said those trees can be taken out and removed. And we asked for a permit to be, or our building office, needed a building permit to do that, because per our code, which is fashioned after the New York State Code, is now our law, it is required that whenever you work in the floodway, you must do a study before you do any work in there, to ensure you're not going to do harm to the total overall river function. And we went round and round, and the position, by whatever from the county was, permit's not required, or we're not going to give you one, and we, they proceeded on with the work without the permits in 2011. We did have a meeting with the county executive and many others, and voiced our opinion that one was required. But I think it became more of a legal issue than it was a decision-making other ones. So on this last meeting, which happened last Tuesday, they've got another plan. And the plan for 2012 is they'll pick up where they left off and clean all the trees out of the flood plain, all the way to 17M, with the exception of the tree, the trees that are growing directly, I guess, in front of the protrusion where the landfill is migrating into the river. And, and so that would protect maybe waters from washing that plug, if you will, away. At the meeting, I took exception to that, that, that they were, first of all, relative worth of money coming from, because we didn't put it in our 2012 budget, all dollar dollars were accounted for. But I also voiced the opinion that a permit would be required. And, and Mr. Howard has told me as the building inspector, he will be communicating on his behalf, not mine, not this board's, on his behalf, as the code enforcing officer for this town, that he will be communicating with the county, soil and water, a permit will be required. I also asked the question, okay, you're going to take all the trees out, I guess, smaller than 20 inches. If it's a 20-inch tree, I don't think it'll be removed. But what they'll do is they're going to take all those trees out between the Gersbeck Farm, where they left off going to 17M. But then I asked the question, I said, well, what about all the area that you did this year? Where you cleaned out some of the trees, but not all the trees, because the DEC had come down and marked a lot of trees that they needed to keep there for the Indiana bat, which is an endangered species. And they said, well, they got a letter from the DEC that they can take all the trees out, and their intent is to go back and take all those remaining trees out that were left in the part they did this year. And I said, well, okay, if we can get by the financing of this, which I think they'll work with the county to get the financing for it, I said, you know, we're going to need this information that whatever you're going to do there is not going to harm the operation of that river going forward. Now, we're treating the county like. Now, we're treating the county like we would treat any other landowner. If Neil owns some land, or Joel owns some land down there and want to go down with a bulldozer and bulldoze around and put a ramp into the river, and then dispense gas into motorboats, guess what? You would have to come and get a permit and request the boss to do so.
Especially Neil and Joel.
And, uh, yeah, you two guys in particular. You look like Chris now. And so, anyway, this is just good business. And so, it, but it is our code, it is our law, and our code enforcement is taking that seriously. So, I just wanted to share with the board, that was the nature of the, of the meeting. And I'm sure there'll be those farmers who want to take all the trees out and get all the water down to somebody else will be coming in here, uh, and pushing on us to agree with us. And so, I'm just sharing, this is all I know about it, it was a meeting, and we'll go from there. Go ahead. There are a lot of questions on this.
You also brought to your attention that you were concerned about if, did any damage or, uh, any of that landfill goes into the, the river and then goes downstream, downstream into Walk Hill, Montgomery, wherever it goes, where it could cause harm to the water systems, and then we'd be held liable for it because we approved it.
Well, that's the thing that crossed my mind, I mean, that we know that the encroachment of the landfill into the river, and I, and I stood there and looked at it, and you can see where it narrows down. I mean, that's as much a deterrent for the water flow as it, the trees are, you know? But that's, I, I don't want to do battle on that kind of issue. I'm just talking about our, I'm just sharing with us that we're going to require a permit from our code enforcement officer. And, uh, yes, but pursuant to what you're saying, and I shared the meeting, you know, my concern is, we don't know what's in that piece of property that juts into the river, maybe inert, maybe just dirt. But if it isn't, and it washes out and it goes somewhere, and then the years to come, it contaminates someone's well, or whatever it is, then they'll be looking to us.
To us.
To us, as a town. And by the way, we're, we're, we're in a lawsuit right now, where people are suing us on a contaminated well or two or three. And, uh, so, it does happen. It does happen.
Just for clarification, downstream, does the village of Goshen have some wells down there?
Yeah, I think they do.
Okay, it's something that they may be concerned about, and they probably need to look into.
Well, I, I don't know who's got wells all, all the way.
Yeah, I just, because again, that is a concern, it's a downstream people, if you will. And my understanding is, well, Mayor's here, is my understanding is that there are some wells, which I think the village may have out there. But I don't go for a fact. No, I'm just missing.
Well, the town of Walk Hill, they had their supervisor-elect was there, and he said, no, he was all in favor of this. He was at the meeting, even though he, and, and I said, eh? Uh, yeah, it's, go for it. So, eh, that was, I, I, I don't think he knew the science behind it or whatever, I don't want to debate that, but...
Go ahead. If I could, I just want to bring some history into this. When the agreement was the first start cleaning the Walk Hill River, those sections that we pay for every year, I was on the board originally. And if I remember correctly, the Army Corps of Engineers came, did the study, uh, did all the groundwork, and then said to the county, who related to the town, we were all involved, okay, we have to do this type of maintenance for the good of the Walk Hill River, and proportionately, whatever your share of the land bordering the river, that's the percentage you'll have to pay. And I remember, it was thirteen thousand and change at that time.
That's, we do the same thing today.
Same thing today. But, in order to do that, there were formal studies, it wasn't just a, a group of people. And I don't know, and that's going to be my question, who is giving us the data or the studies to say? Because they'll, they'll be liable somewhere down the line. No, this won't impact any other community down the road if we clean everything out. And yes, Goshen, you'll be held harmless because you have done nothing wrong. Have, have they discussed that at all?
That's the issue, there's no, no one's going to put their pen to paper to say that.
So, who are the people that are saying, you know, I think this is a good idea?
The county is making a request, this is their, I'm sorry, this is their, their plan. They need, by our code, to make applications for our building office, specify what they're going to do and the study, as to what impact that, we'll have on the environment.
We're looking for the impact, right, Dennis? If they don't comply, they are a higher form of government, and I know that. They overruled us on roads during Hurricane Irene, they let heavier trucks run on our roads by order of the executives. Can they do that with the Walk Hill River? Is there a higher form of government? Can they just say, you know what, we don't need a permit, we're just going to move on and hello?
Yeah, that's pretty much the position they've taken.
Okay.
And in the past, and I'm assuming they would take that position in the future. It's a, it's a question of what risk the town of Goshen is put in.
Well, they're a higher form of authority, and they disregard whatever requirement we have for a study or whatever, and they go and do it. That liability won't fall on our taxpayer.
Yes, it will. You can't absolve yourself of, you know, the mandatory duty to protect your community through existing laws or, or philosophy, if you will. And the argument would be, probably, on a, on a damage claim, that the town of Goshen failed to address its, you know, governmental responsibility, regardless it was a higher form of government, county, federal, or even state.
Well, I'm saying, if we say, yes, you need a permit and a study so we know what's going on and what will happen, and they say we don't, just go ahead and do it. Are we going to be liable?
Uh, you will be named in the lawsuit, and the risk issue is there, and it'll be determined in that lawsuit whether or not you're going to be responsible, in part or in all.
Okay, then legally, tell us what to do.
Well, that's, that's what we're doing now. From a legal perspective, as I told the building inspector today, uh, he needs to give us a memo as the, as the code enforcement officer, as to what is required. He needs to pursue that with the powers that be, the county and otherwise, and once we get a decision as to what the county then intends to do, we have to react as to however the board wishes to act, or not act.
Well, if the study says it's okay, then there'll be no, no problem.
But see, that's the problem, though, nobody wants to do a study.
Why?
That's the problem, because it costs money. And nobody wants to pay for that study.
Well, you've got to put the light on before you go into the room.
I couldn't agree with you more, but that's why we get all these assurances, we did in the past. Oh, don't worry about it, it's been done for a hundred years, it's, you're an obstructionist, and, you know, it's going to be a problem, because it doesn't take a genius to understand that when that water comes through, if those properties are clear-cut, the velocity, the volume, and I'm no engineer, is going to be such that there's going to be some, I think, some impact. Now, is it going to be deleterious? I couldn't tell, but that's where these studies are, are studying.
How about, how about having the county name us as an additional insurer? And then a, um...
Hold harmless. Just so you're aware, that exact item was discussed on the first application, which I attended, I think Phil was there, Doug was there. We were promised, by the end of the day, we would have that in writing from the county of Orange, and before the end of the day, or the cock, crow three times, as they say, you know, we were told, no, we're not doing that. At the advice of council, no way we're giving that day. Yeah, I agree with yours, ethically reasonable, ethically reasonable, but, uh, the county deemed that that was not going to be done.
Okay, so then it's really, we're getting ourselves now into a match with the county.
Potentially.
We're going to have to, um...
Potentially, yeah.
Not something we want to do.
Potentially. And that's why, yes, it's a dog tonight, and Billy's quicker also. You take it one step at a time. I think the county did look at it, we got some, uh, modification initially. Who knows, they may look at this again, they may not, but you, you have to react as they make their decision.
Anyway, that was just information, that's what...
Well, it's going to be an honest one, because hopefully, I talked to Legislative Hooky before this, it's been a matter of time, I'm vying for that, but for whatever reason. But he proposed, if there's a piece of land that's getting into the Walk Hill River, and the town is concerned about that, he, he suggested they, we notify the county of Orange of what piece of property they're concerned would be washed away, and then they, Orange County, can investigate and assure us what is or isn't in that particular portion of land that's jutting into the Walk Hill River. That, that was his suggestion, so I'm just relaying on, if we have to talk to Legislative Hooky. And that's what they said, if we identify, they'll investigate. Well, otherwise, I have the same thing, impression they're going to go with, with this or without.
Well, he's on the Soil and Water Board, he knows exactly where the property is. Maybe Neil will, uh, will, uh, I mean, you know, he talks about the permit, it's very obvious. I mean, Jerry and I walked out a couple of years ago, and she took a photograph, and you see how it goes in. I mean, it's pretty obvious, and we talked about it in the meeting, but that's fine.
So, from what I understand, are we, are we concerned just about the one piece, or the whole landfill?
Well, I think we need a...
The whole landfill's got a collection, so...
No.
Well, we don't need your favor, that bear boy, you know, disrupt, that one just said, eh? Disrupture all of it. So, a piece of land, if it's only one piece of land, I think it's the whole project. Oh, okay, that's, that's a concern, you know? That's why I wanted to... I heard from Doug, the ample ton, there's a piece of, I don't know if it is, is jutting into the Walk Hill, and that's going to wash away. And Orange County willing to tell you what's in that?
But I think also, I mean, it's...
I don't want you to go.
You know, when you clean all these trees out and you get the water, it's going to go like... No, no, it gets to a certain point, then where's that water going? I mean, truly, we walked out to Walk Hill, uh, golf course there.
Yeah, we, we discussed, we...
I, I don't know.
I, I think the point is, like Phil's making, I think Kenny's on the same track. What we want to know is somebody give us some advice, in engineering and otherwise, what is the effect of this? And everybody's like, don't worry about it, it's not going to be any effect. And that's easy to say, just like it would be easy to say that this is Armageddon if we do this. Somebody do a study, professionally qualified.
We're together, okay, well, this is... All right, the next item, um, under new business, we need a, really, motion to authorize the supervisor to pay for the Marshall and Sterling, the, uh, for the insurance bill for the year two thousand and twelve. George, do you have the numbers across to that?
Yes, I do.
Make a motion, and then we're going to do that.
Dennis, on, um, Monday night, um, I gave the board the figure of what the insurance was going to be for two thousand and twelve. It's now has modified, and we thought, as we did last year, that there should be a motion accepting Marshall and Sterling as our insurance provider and at the rate or the, the amount of, is that...
Yeah, that's proper. I spoke to my son, who was here in attendance. And, yeah, that would be proper, and you can do that by oral motion, you don't need a written resolution.
Okay, so, the amounts, um, well, the resolution is, is to, uh, I guess, appoint Marshall and Sterling as the broker for two thousand and twelve, and the actual money from...
And authorize the supervisor to start the contract.
Right. Start the contracts, um, and the rate actually has come down. It's now sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty cents. Somebody needs to move that. So, move, second.
Okay, any discussion?
Good job, George.
Yes, I agree. I, I'd like to thank George, too. Insurance, as I've said all along, is one of the most important and expensive parts of our budget. And, uh, George has been working on not only this one, but the Workman's Comp and all these other things in preparation for the two thousand and twelve budget. All favors say of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next one, would someone like to make a motion to authorize the supervisor to pay accounts, pay with check, run on twelve, one, two thousand and eleven, amounting to seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-eight cents?
So, move, second.
Any discussion? All, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we're open for privilege of the floor and anything anybody would like to talk about.
Before you go for that, we do need to address one new business item on the Orange and Rockland application on the project on Hartley Road. As the board is aware...
It says something to people.
Well, that's why I was hoping he wouldn't leave, but, uh, it's something that's protective of them. As you know, we presently have before us an application, the planning board has before it, a site plan application, all right? That application, much like we were discussing tonight, is in a zoning area which makes it permissible. That's why they don't have to come here for a zone change. But they have to come here for a special use permit. You're going to have to seeker the special use permit. So, what I'm saying to you is, we need to set a public hearing for joint purposes between the town of Goshen and the planning board for the Goshen, to consider the seeker aspects of the Orange and Rockland application, the special use permit aspects of the application, and at the same time, allow the planning board to have its public hearing with regards the site plan use. So, someone, on January the nineteenth...
At seven thirty?
Two thousand, two thousand and twelve, or at seven thirty, sooner or later, as the matter can be heard, someone needs to move that, and I can address it further.
I'll, I'll move it.
Second.
For discussion, why that date is so important is that, one, much like we were doing tonight, in fairness to the applicant, you don't want to just redundancy-wise do all these studies and make them pass through. It's a coordinated, uh, review by both boards at the same time, and that date will fit with the seeker requirements for compliance without any defaults. That's why it's the nineteenth, because that's a special meeting for this board. We don't normally have a meeting set for that night.
Yeah, we'll be at the planning board meeting that night.
Exactly, and the planning board would run the meeting, you wouldn't be in attendance, because, again, at the same time as they're scoping, et cetera, and having a public hearing on the site plan application, these environmental issues would be addressed, and studies may or may not be required, et cetera.
Two separate votes, right? We have to vote on the special use?
That's right.
So, do we vote at that?
So, it'll be subsequent to that time. No, you vote subsequent to that meeting, because if you notice, that's the public hearing for seeker purposes, and the public hearing for site plan purposes. The problem will be continued. They would not be closed, they won't be voted on that night until all the seeker aspects are completed in any conditions. Additionally, you want to place on a special use.
They have to complete seeker before we can prove the special use permit.
Yes.
So, it'll be sometime down the road then?
Yes. And, and you've got to get on the same track, that's why, in, in theory, all your applications will go this way if you involve the planning board for seeker purposes, and if you involve, again, in this instance, a special use permit, many things require.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thursday night?
Thursday night, seven thirty, nine...
Tuesday night. I apologize, I'm confused. Yeah, it's a Thursday. I'm going to tell you, it's a Thursday.
And, uh, that has to be, uh, to be duly advertised, right there?
Correct. Right. And what we'll do is, the planning board will take the, uh, what do you call it, lead, if you will, and, uh, advertising that with cooperation at the end at the expense of the applicant.
Right.
Okay, very good, you like that?
I like that. All right, now we will open for privilege of the floor on anything anybody would like to talk about.
Just real quick, Doug, do you have an answer tonight to the question I had Monday about what percentage of the households in the Orange Districts were...
I wasn't looking it up. I mean, if you... No, I mean...
Let me have that, I'll, I'll look it up.
Sure, okay, very good.
I think it would be good to know, for the public.
Okay.
I don't know the answer, but you will then.
All right, the, um...
One, one other real quick thing, and I don't think it necessarily needs discussion. It's rare that we have the opportunity to have both the mayor and the supervisor in the same public meeting at the same time. I'd like to put on the floor tonight a request to the board and to the mayor that the two boards together go to the legislature and make a request that the county take over traffic enforcement for the two municipalities, which will save both municipal entities large portions of their police budgets.
What did you say, what did you say to that, Governor Mike?
You're, you're going into executive session, you can discuss it there, you don't need to discuss it here, but I'd like to put it on the floor where both chairs of both boards are...
What are the concepts, but you, there's a lot of studies, you go into that before you make a decision.
Oh, yeah.
What's the order you make a decision?
Well, Phil and I went to Department of State in Albany, we have some information about all of this. It is not as easy as you might think. Uh, Orange County Sheriff's Department pretends that is not authorized, it'll road patrol. They know they may give tickets, they're not authorized to do that. So, there'd be a lot, but I'm not saying it can't be done.
Yes.
But it would not be a quick...
Okay.
Okay, very good.
It never will be done until the discussion is had.
Well, we've already known, Mr. Charv, we've already been talking, so, I mean, it's, things are going.
Excellent.
All right, so what we're going to do tonight is, in a moment, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. We're going to go into executive session to discuss the potential settlement of the village-town sewer dispute and propose new intermunicipal agreement. We'll be in there, if, if, I'm hoping that it will go fast. We're then going to come back and vote on this. and vote on this, if we can get agreement amongst themselves. If not, we won't come back and we'll proceed on with all the other items.
But we'll come back with just some stuff.
But, well...
Yeah, to inform the public, we want to be able to come back down.
We'll make, we'll let our clerk know that go on home and everybody will be dismissed because we haven't reached agreement enough to go back. So we'll be doing that, and then we'll go, then after we do that, we'll go back into executive session to discuss the status of tax areas and discuss Chief Marshall's update on his status with the intent not to be turned. So would someone like to make...
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. So with that, if anybody would like to hang around for the outcome of this...
Do you have a key to the office there so they can...
I do not.
I don't...
Vow, but you can leave my camera key to it, sure. Now, you might want to keep that on, I mean, not, you keep that off, turn our mics off, but...
You're obviously not talking about this.
No. I'm talking about the big mic. Can I just pull the power on that one valve?
I'm going to leave this here, Doug. Just turn it off.
You better take it with, I don't understand. I can't keep it.
No, we stay here.
Where do we go? So we, yeah, we're going to... Vow, go down to the time works office, and then we'll... We reopen the meeting?
Move on.
Second. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Dennis?
Can I get that vote moved?
Dennis, you with us? Yep, I'm with you.
Who have the vote?
I hope, I hope...
Any second.
Okay. The motion, which would be based upon our discussion of the past three years, would be that we authorize, the board approve...
Start over again.
Mine doesn't work. The motion would be, or the proper motion, would be that the town board does hereby approve and authorize the supervisor to sign any and all documents in connection with the annexed or attached town-village-Goshen intermunicipal agreement with respect to sewer services, which is presently before you, which document has the effect of resolving the disputed arbitration issues we've been engaged in, and that, again, he be authorized to sign any and all documents to effectuate that, both on behalf of the town and the two sewer districts, the town of Goshen. But secondly, the supervisor will also be authorized to author correspondence to be transmitted with this agreement after signing to the village, indicating that it is agreed that the town of Goshen will pay to the village of Goshen the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to settle all disputed arithmetic claims and items with regards to the billings as rendered by the village in the years 2008, 2009, and 2010. And thirdly, that the attorney for the town is authorized to sign any and all documents to effectuate the foregoing, including but not limited to the stipulation ending or terminating, if you, ending or terminating the arbitration proceeding based upon the foregoing, and the village of Goshen affirmatively withdrawing by stipulation with prejudice the legal proceeding, village of Goshen v. town of Goshen, which was the subject or part of the subject of the arbitration. So it's a three-part aspect.
Would someone like to make a motion in that regard?
Move.
Okay. I don't know who you want to attribute that to.
Phil may devote. Phil and Kenny, Kenny second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, just to, as you are aware, the agreement that Doug is to sign is before you, so that's the attached materials I was referring to.
Well, we wanted to thank you and Steve for your diligent work over the course of these three years.
It's been a long time. Seems like it's longer, could be. It's a long time.
Thank you so very much for all of your hard work. And just the other thing I'd like to say is that, you know, we do have a new mayor, and I hope that this is really a new beginning, that we don't get into this unfortunate set of circumstances again, that we can have an open door policy back and forth, have more meetings, and resolve our issues, you know, like boards, like, you know, there was Doug, you know, years and years and years.
Yeah, if I can just comment on it, George, that's the absolute underlying intent of the agreement, which I think we just discussed, and you all know, that the boards agree to meet as necessary, at least on two occasions, if not more, between their respective representatives to discuss such things and to work out any problems or disputes, because I'm sure David Donovan has advised the village, there are going to be issues that come up, which we couldn't possibly have foreseen, where there may be a dispute over. There's a provision as to how those are to be handled. And the, obviously, just echo your words, the obvious intent is reasonable people, get them together, talk about it, lines of communication, and they should be able to be resolved, as opposed to unfortunately where we got in this aspect or this item some years ago.
What I'd like to say is that I'd like to thank you and Steve and all the witnesses and whatnot, you know, Mr. Riddick and others, and Mr. Cameron for arbitrating this, and the village for working with us to come up with this agreement. One of the things that I saw when I first got involved in this back in 2008 was that we had a fifty-year-old agreement that was inadequately put together back fifty years ago, and it didn't reflect what we were doing, didn't reflect the equipment we had, it was not understood by lots and lots of people. And as most disagreements occur, it's because people don't understand what's going on. And I would encourage all of us, and this board has spent a great deal of time, and I would like to thank all the board members for the meetings and endless hours and personal sacrifice, leaving here at eleven, twelve o'clock, trying to get up the next day and proceeding on. But I think it's incumbent on all of us, on this board, and people who will take, come to this board after us, and are professionals, and I would say the same with the village, that we really, really understand and become schooled in what's in this and how it works. Because it's no better than our understanding of it. And again, I go back to 2008, when we did not understand a great deal of this, and when people got anxious, it's because anxiety follows not understanding. So it's a new beginning, and we can proceed on with it. So with that, are there any other...
Yeah. I was always trying, you know, the self-praise stinks, you know, but I can't believe you without thinking, Lou, and Doug, and we came a long way from our first negotiation sessions. I mean, we're like, they were there and we were here. But to come here and tonight, the possibility of a final agreement, it's really exciting for me a bit. Lou, thank you for your help, Doug. The whole board listened and digested, but those meetings at the bar, or when, GW is the name of the restaurant?
Shut up.
We met a lot of times, we met a lot of times, and everybody in this board was always available, had the ability to negotiate the agreement. Of course, professionals, thank you, so the self-praise stinks, I'm guilty.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I think I'd like to make a comment. First of all, I'd like to thank Dennis and Steve, but Dennis, he took the brunt of it. I mean, he took the torture for the last three years.
I'll agree.
But what I would like to do is reflect on the agreement and say that the failsafe of this thing is that this town board is made up of town and village residents. So I think George and I were a very active part of this, and we will be affected by whatever happens in this agreement. So I see it as a very, very fair agreement, once again, because you had a cross-section of people that are going to be affected by this agreement, including two village people. So, and I'd like to thank the board. I mean, we all worked so, so hard on this thing for bringing it to a resolution, and I do think we have an excellent agreement that we can build upon and go forward, so.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we roll a poll vote?
I just want to say, I did say, not that I, like, you said everything that shouldn't be said, but I, you know, I went to Steve's office many times with Dennis to go over the numbers and so forth, and it was always a pleasant experience. I learned a lot by being with Steve, I learned a lot by being with Dennis. I think I've become more educated today because of the things that we had to talk about. And I appreciate the fact that when I had a point to make, that Steve always listened. He's the accountant, but sometimes I had to bring my point in about numbers, and I appreciate that, Steve, that you treated me that way, okay? And I want to thank everybody, and I want to thank Kyle for our meetings and so forth. This has been a long process, but you know, we move on from here tonight, and I just hope that whatever you receive from us is something that you're favorable of, because you're the second part of it, it doesn't work unless you agree with it, Kyle, on your board. So let's just hope everything works out going forward. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can we roll a poll vote, please?
Councilor B. Catterina?
Aye.
Councilor B. Lyons?
Aye.
Councilor Newbold?
Aye.
Councilor Capella?
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, Dennis. Uh, you want to say something?
Sure. Just to clear, Dennis, this is the last version that I've seen of it. It hasn't changed since the beginning of tonight.
That's correct. Actually, I filed, no, it has changed in minor respect, Mayor.
Clarification.
Has to do with clarification, typos, we removed...
Clarifications.
Yeah, language about the meter, which doesn't exist.
That's right. You see, it's a voting. Right. Just wanted to thank this board, thank everyone that's been involved throughout this process. Monday night, the village board will vote on this as well. If we have a meeting tonight, we have a meeting tomorrow, I would do it tomorrow, but Monday's our next scheduled meeting, and we'll vote on it and follow suit. And as it's been said, you know, this is a new beginning, and it really brings true that we are one community, there's a town, there's a village, but we're all Goshen, and it's one community. And I think that this agreement that we've come together with, based on the help of our professionals and members of both boards, is fair to both communities. It's something that is going to allow us to move forward in a positive way, to help hopefully all residents eventually bring that, to bring sewer costs, but work together in having a real path forward to the future. So I just want to thank all of you for your time. I do feel bad for Dennis, because I know him and Dave are going to have a void in their lives now.
Don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it. We'll fill it up. It's okay, I'd like to approach the board and shake everyone's hands, because it really...
You washing it?
So if I can reach everyone, thank you all very much. It means a lot.
Drive carefully.
Yes, thank you very much, everyone. And speaking on behalf of the full village board, we thank you, we appreciate it, and we're looking forward to a bright future working day.
Good.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
It's housekeeping, the board now will be transmuted tomorrow.
Now, would someone like to make a motion, or I guess we've made it originally, we'll make a motion, and we go back to executive session? All favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Focus. One guy, go. Here you go.